...discussion on anything on this agenda. Minutes.
Sir's dead, that's the one.
Yeah.
I knew it was. Well, yeah, sir, Wakers, what's his?
Oh.
Morphon.
Morphon, yeah. Okay. All in favor? Safety and safety.
Steps was on your list. There's a zero.
Yeah.
And here is theta's. So are we changing anything other than? The one for Calvin.
So are we changing anything other than Calvin's?
We're just changing Calvins?
Yeah, changing Calvins, I guess.
We have to.
Well, yeah, we have to change Calvin's.
Yep.
A mistake on there, just trying to hurt you then.
That's all right.
Kelly was down Friday.
I moved, we accepted the safety consent once with the change of Calvin or certain. All in favor?
Aye.
Here's the actual field, James beside the top and then the little spot down.
I probably went inside, I even noticed it.
Well, I didn't look at the ones that we.
Well.
I did, but I was trying to pass it to her.
Got a slide right there.
So we'll have to just have to sign a new IRS one because it will take those taxes.
Stan's son coaches from University of Ohio. Stan's son.
I get, no, it's my son-in-law.
Son-in-law.
I get to go to the bowl game, stay with the football players in 350.
Bowl game in the end.
It'll be at Dallas.
Fresno.
Fresno.
Fresco.
Fresco.
Fresco Texas.
Frisco, get it right.
Thank you, let's get it right.
I was listening to Nancy.
Well, he said Fresco, I was thinking San Francisco.
And they play in California, San Diego.
Somebody got on, looked at it. The OU bowl game, they had time to take it for $55. They invited that.
No.
I had to look again and it bumped up to $200.
Don't say.
I can't believe you for the $55 to be given.
No. Yeah, well, I would say we break. What it is.
My son-in-law has a day at Alba. You have him out of the day or something like that?
Oh, yeah, I think that's right because he was one of the winningest football coaches they had in the land.
He's a wonderful one.
One of the winningest football coaches over there.
It's a far right single point.
I don't know who you're talking about. Is it in the early 2000s? My son was one of his trainers.
That's Brian, who likes, oh, you, is that his connection?
Well, no, that's my son-in-law.
Oh, okay.
Brian, my son, like, over there. No question. The last three years have been very difficult.
Oh, you're waiting.
I mean, not basketball, way too fast for me to do football. Kevin, tell me.
I got my letter about the clinic.
What?
February 28th, December, there'll be no longer Cherokee Family Clinic.
Well, I understand.
Where?
That's not true, it won't be in Teggers, but I understand Nikki's going to stay and have her own clinic. And have another doctor.
I didn't know that, but the Integris is closing.
I didn't know that.
If you need your records sent somewhere else, you gotta fill it for them out and.
They wouldn't tell you, they wouldn't tell you that she's going to stay. She, that's the plan now, that's what Margaret Smith told me.
The letter didn't state that.
No, and they won't because they're in Teggers, so that's your building.
I didn't know what was going on.
In fact, I thought, what in the heck am I, because I noticed Reggie had one in the box and I had one in the same letter. No, anything in there, turn it. And then December 28th. And they will no longer have a clinic in Cherokee.
So Nikki's going to keep her office.
Too much, we're going to be a bit private.
That's what they're planning on, yeah.
Should I refer you to a hospital and all that for my little doctor?
She can refer you even out of Integris because.
They'll take your money, oh, yeah.
That's the main thing, Toby, right there, they won't.
They'll always take your money.
Because, you know, Faith had her surgery at St. Mary's.
How's she doing?
Infrologist at Pecans. Okay, she's doing all along.
She blowing it going now, is she?
Pretty much, she still has back pain, but not like, not anything intense like it was. She won't be able to play basketball till next year.
Well, you got a fact, cut the brackets for that, turn it over there.
Yeah, dude.
On your phone?
I've got it on my phone.
If somebody, you got a line? If somebody sent it to me.
Hi, the boys.
Yeah, I need boys and girls.
Well, can't help you.
They're all picture both.
Okay, got it.
Thank you, Carl.
They sent me both, but I want to save the boys.
Wood decking it out, leave it there. I would have worn, look at that. Well, it's on the deck of drink beer. Right? Oh, now that's pretty sick. Because I know Paul, they don't have one in Paul's office copy, Toby. They do that we front back against wasting the P L.
I'm trying to say, I don't know, probably they're still running out of paper that people know. By the time those people get their paper, first day will be over.
Well, I was gonna say, yeah, you know.
But they didn't do the, they didn't do the actual meeting until last Wednesday, so.
At least they did a meeting this time.
I believe they had more than three, I think.
Yeah, I got it, I just got it, Carl. I'm pretty sure they had.
If they didn't have one this time, there would have been, I think, there would have been a few less teams in them next year.
I could, someone would get out any of them, try to play the same people all the time.
They don't want to get out and go to the same tournament, so it's not going to change anything.
Oh, I know, that's the thing, I mean, that's old, Kay, we used to go down to Thomas to turn it, went to Bad Goo.
I think she's like in Garber.
Well, he was like in Garber too.
Garber, he's got a car key and a mag and.
Ooh.
Some good competition.
Cherokee wanted to get into that one too.
Huh?
Cherokee wanted to get into that one too.
Really?
Everybody wanted to get into that.
I don't know, I don't know if they will with the social level. Or not to upset, to bring it in.
We're playing the same people all the time.
Cherokee's the one that needs to change their tournament. It used to be that way.
That's why.
Thank you. That's what?
Darren, who's all Dennis.
Who's?
Davis.
Oh.
Not forty-nine or?
Have you done, seen the baby yet?
I have not.
Where's they live?
Benham and Edmond.
Now, who's she married?
Um, Ben Hutchins.
Hutchins?
Hutchins, I always say it wrong.
Yeah, yeah.
Byron, I guess she was.
I sort of forgot, but I heard I hadn't seen her for so long.
Makes Christmas a little more fun.
Do what?
Have another kid at Christmas.
Yeah.
A lot.
Well, probably fun this year, it'll be too little to want that, but next year.
I was wondering why. Why, Katrina wanted to blow you, like, don't her? But Donnie's having blast his granddaughter, yeah, watching, even her.
She's going to be the one that's lost, I knew.
Yeah, yeah. Did they find it? Did they find anything, say?
I don't think they've signed on anything yet. Not one big bell. Or maybe they've signed, but I just don't know.
Maybe up this weekend, but whatever, tornado, when I go.
Apple, all right, all right, thank you.
Apple five sounds good.
You want to go to the apple pie, now, if you want to sign anything, you gotta go to the apple pie.
Right.
That's what I was thinking. I'm going to see if she died, ain't warm up there, I want to see her.
I'll see your friend.
I'm going to see what she is. Thanks, Gary, got it.
I'm going to get that damn old one to the table.
Second.
All in favor? For sort of forations.
Appropriate.
That'd be a good app.
I don't stand, I don't.
Appropriate. For, for the forations.
Um, Taxual Correction meeting tomorrow at 8:30 and next time it's at 9:00, Jake.
You don't need me. What, one, one again? I bet Shattuck one gentleman, what do you bet?
Jay, could you hear me?
Then, what?
Taxual Correction, 8:30, 9:00.
That'd be pretty good.
What?
That'd be a good game.
Yeah, I know. Well, they want you, it's up here, go watch a pair of you play, but I didn't.
Did you really sound like they played very long?
Yeah.
They got beat by, can't remember what the, how many they got beat by.
But I know, I know Jim Diller and I know Vince for gold, so. Yeah, I wouldn't mind going, Dean, and watch that game. Could have played that game, remember that one?
Shattuck, was that Shattuck in Davenport?
I think so, yeah. Why don't you say yours? They're just a machine out there.
That means for a long time.
Yeah.
Thank you, man.
Yeah, well. You're welcome. I'm a nice guy.
Mean I can help you back.
Yeah, come in.
Since, uh, from, well, since the day I was born, Jay. I'm a nice guy since the day I was born.
Whatever broke your nose to it.
There's a lot of ladies, I think I'm a nice guy. Everybody else is officially on you, listen. Do you have a bank one for Harold Pick?
He's still in a for Taxual Correction, so I hope he minds.
Go find somebody to replace Lewis.
I don't know what's going on there. Probably Shane thinks an apple pie would probably help a little.
Uh, we called him since the dawn. Like it may. Close your head, must be all crossing. I missed, where was it?
You what?
The alcohol one, I missed the alcohol. No wonder I missed it. Make most approve.
You wish I was now.
All in favor? My three alcohol.
Have two this time, mine and the sheriff's.
Easy, Doc, get it good. We should go on still warriors to watch Tennessee women play. They stayed, those dates stayed with them until halftime.
They blew them out then?
Huh?
They blew them out?
Yeah, I know. There's actually plenty of places to set though.
We should get, I never went when my mom and dad, sister always went because we'd always get free tickets. Now my cousin doesn't work, no longer run the team, so.
That makes a difference, don't it? Since you took me, you know, Sage Powers, you know, I'm still with him these last ten minutes. Been on stuff with OSU football, the Kremlin hold Jeff Baker. His kids are still crumbling, he drives, ever drives a truck, hauls equipment. That one sets her in back. I said, Jeff, you know what, Sage, you know, I was wanting, don't you think I do, so, oh, yeah, I'm pretty stupid, ain't I? Went quite a fun time listening to tell stories the night I was eating. I want to worry about homecoming and Jeff wasn't eating.
I'm going to step off of the porch, all in favor?
Aye.
Monday highway, finish yours.
But I'm over criminal, I film and I think, sure, that's air conditioned, oh, this rain pouring down, so there's laughter, but I'm like, film. And everybody else goes, wow, that's.
I'm going to go, and then I saw them, I walked into my house and I couldn't leave with you to school from my house.
I know, I know.
And I was like, yeah, I'm just going to stay in.
I told Kay, we better go ahead and leave because it's pretty foggy out there. But you had to do a few more things, so we got away about, I went about four miles, many one, I had to call them, tell them we're going to be a little late. I said, I told you that. After that rain, it was no fog.
Mom said, Mom said we'll open the city, and she said it was, it was pretty clear until she got closer to home. I mean, you outside of either, it wasn't bad, it just said you got up here, it was pretty bad. I trust myself, I'm still trust the other drivers.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not doing it. I make most approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Allocation of alcohol, better.
That's what I was looking for. Harold missed one, so I said, we're getting closer, we're getting closer.
Yeah. I'd actually use negative effect on those too.
Harold Pickfield, I hate saying fifteen fifty.
Same, well, I'm going to pick one to be the one that got approved.
Huh? You don't get them mixed up?
Yeah.
I move with the captain, move with the gag, I'll start with that.
It's both.
Mine is perfect.
Uh-oh, is that okay?
Jay, these, um, top ones, you don't sign, it's the sheriff, the treasurer, mine, and the bottom ones, you do sign, it's emergency manager, best pretendant, and justice. And the Toby's side of, uh, very well.
That'd be the December district three, too. They would have liked me to sign these four. Just all one, Vanessa?
Yeah, yeah.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're going to have fun, but he is getting pretty boring now. He can, both of you agree.
I mean, there's only, we were talking, there's only so many ways that you can.
Yeah, you work, it makes it sound interesting, yeah. Hey, some people read them every week, check on that money. This part, so we got thirty-eight kids in high school?
I'm not sure, I can't remember off the top of my head what that number is.
That's what I heard, thirty-eight or thirty-two.
It's not very many.
That's not very many.
I mean, when I was there, it was only in the forties.
I know, one thing, all the kids stay, we got grades, but we're going to have a whole bunch. I never seen so many kids at fifth or sixth grade ballgame, template, girls and boys setting over there.
You have to check with their numbers, because they're going to, they're going to be teetering on the edge of jumping up a class.
Yeah, we will.
Go back to class B football, and they don't want that. Cherokee was, some of them will not, some of them actually, the school, but talking to fans, they want to drop to class C.
Hey, they cheated one up to, oh, to stuff class C, they're only leading me right now.
I think you're not, they're not even close to dropping.
Huh?
You have to lose a lot of students to drop.
It's like we told Tyler Severin, you know, you're not driving throughout Buffalo and every, every boy sitting all that. Cherokee got a pretty weak district too, going on.
But.
Yeah.
But it was, it was a good district last year. It's just everybody's down this year.
Yeah.
I mean, criminal's kind of down and.
Yes.
There are teams that have the potential of being good.
Good old Harold Ham, they're good old, Tom Ward, he's still drilling.
Someone looks going to be in a district like that next year. Buffalo's not going to be getting this all, just say, in Pot Creek and some of them, but.
Well, not going to be that great view as well. Neither.
Buffalo's going to be losing about everybody.
Right.
Plays.
I move with Jesse, Rome Drive to Birmingham. Who else had that? All in favor?
See, Malcolm, he has a team next year.
What?
Malcolm.
They probably have a team. We're getting a fragile quarterback next year. Yeah, Kremlin, they haven't touched in the grades, of course, that kid thinks he, you know, daddy thinks he's a superstar. Daddy thinks he's a superstar quarterback, he's gonna go chism, win it all, game leading, just play it on match.
Probably access easy for different teams.
That J J Pippin kid, he get a lot of jumps like that, I tell you, wow. That little trouble, he was six foot, probably five or six guy, more cones though. You know, he was.
Kid at Covington. That, he was supposed to be a freshman, but he turned his name later this year.
He what?
Kid from Covington, that big. You know, his brother played last year, was a really good point guard.
I'm making the road, you two approve.
Welcome.
Second. Hold on favor.
Aye.
South Barber got a, Mr. Bintley, South Barber got a kid moved in. Her got a four and shape two, six eight from Russia. Supposed to be starting today. Just a night before, like, twice.
And I'm barber's playing correct.
And I, and I prefer to run and play them against, I think.
Where they playing at?
I think, if you go through Cleos, stuff called horse from screen.
Any of the team business? I moved with you.
Where?
Cleos, a bet. Aye.